Good afternoon and welcome to our first, my first meeting of the year. It's our second meeting of the year. And I appreciate everybody in our audience today, in our council chambers, and we have a packed room tonight, so it's always good to see everybody. I will lead us in invocation tonight, and our council member Cal Newton will lead us in respects to the flag. Please rise.
Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the many opportunities and the blessings that you have put on our city, our community. We ask that you give the guidance to this governing board as we make decisions that affect the citizens of our city and our community. We ask that you be with us as we make those decisions. We also ask that you protect all of our employees, and especially those that are in homes way on a daily basis, that you allow them to work and come home safely to their families. We also pray that we understand the importance of governance and how it affects our daily lives and the civil concourse that we have here at the city. And we ask that you always give us that opportunity to have those discussions in a way that pleases you. We ask all these things of your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get into the body of our meeting, we have some special recognitions and a swearing-in ceremony also. And I'm going to ask Chief Stewart to come forward and lead us in the police department's promotion. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I thank you, council. This is always a special occasion for us to be able to have friends and family here tonight to enjoy in our promotions here within the police department. I'm gonna call the candidates down, and as they do, I'll tell you a little bit about each one of them. Sergeant Don Hodges, he's been with the police department since 2006. He left us briefly from '89 to '93 to go to the sheriff's office. There he served as a deputy investigator and a bloodhound handler. He's also a graduate of Anderson University. He was promoted to sergeant in 2010, and his current new assignment will be a patrol lieutenant. And Sergeant, I believe you have somebody here tonight you'd like to recognize?
Yes, sir. First of all, I recognize my wife, my mom and dad, my sister and her family, and just a few fellows that I've worked with over the years. Henry Kiesler from East Bay Park County, Al Pierce from Anderson County, and my cousin Wendell, who works with the county fire department now as an arson investigator.
Thank you. Sergeant Mike Roberson, he's been with the police department since 2008. He's promoted to corporal in 2012 and sergeant in 2013. He's also a 21-year retired veteran of the United States Navy. He has associate degree from Southwestern Community College. His new assignment will also be patrol lieutenant. Sergeant, you have someone here tonight that you'd like to recognize?
Excellent wife, Latia Roberson, and mother, and father.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna ask Captain McColl and Captain Akins to come down, and we're gonna do the penning of the badges and... We have five officers that are gonna be promoted to corporal, and I'd like them to come down also, and I'm gonna tell you a little bit about them as they come down. First one is Officer Jamie Goolsby. He's been with us since 2016. He also has eight years of experience and comes to us from Anderson County Sheriff's Office. He also served seven years in the United States Marine Corps. His new assignment will be a corporal within our detention center. The next candidate is Officer Vivian McCorquandale. She's been employed with the police department since 2014. She previously worked at the Anderson County Sheriff's Office. She has training in first-line supervision, mid-level management, and is a field training officer along with NCI C certification. She previously served as a lieutenant at the Anderson County Detention Center. Her new position here will be detention corporal. Our next candidate will be Officer Chris Miles. He's been employed with the police department here since 2014. He is the late, he is the son of the late Detective Sergeant Tom Miles within our department. He also has an associate's degree from Tri-County Technical College and is working on his bachelor's degree. His new assignment will also be detention corporal. Our next candidate is Officer Maxina Shepherd. She's been with the police department since 2014. She is a field training officer within our detention division, and she was also the detention officer of the year for 2015, excuse me. She has an associate's degree in criminal justice and medical assisting from Forest College. Officer Shepherd, I believe you have some folks here tonight you'd like to recognize?
Yes, my last candidate, too.
Thank you for coming. And our last candidate is Officer Kim Slayton. She's been employed with the police department since 2010. She is a field training officer and also has first-line supervision. She has also been the acting sergeant for almost two years. She has begun enrollment process at Tri-County Technical College to further her education, and her new assignment will also be detention corporal. Now I will administer the swearing of the oath. Everyone raise their right hand. Okay, repeat after me, and I'll state this with your name first. Aye, Don?
Aye, Don Hodges.
Aye, Mike Roberson.
Aye, Jamie Goolsby.
Aye, Chris Miles.
Aye, Maxina Shepherd.
Now I'll start with the lieutenants first. As a lieutenant?
Absolutely.
And then the corporals as a?
As a corporal.
With the city of Anderson?
City of Anderson.
Will fairly, equally, and impartially?
Will fairly, equally, and impartially.
To the best of my ability and skill?
To the best of my ability and skill.
Exercise the trust reposed in me?
Exercise the trust reposed in me.
And will use my best endeavors?
And will use my best endeavors.
To preserve the peace?
To preserve the peace.
And carry on the fact?
And carry on the fact.
According to law?
According to law.
The purpose for which I've been elected?
The purpose for which I've been elected.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, lieutenants and corporals. Thank you.
Chief?
Mr. Mayor, council staff, I thank you for living, letting us have this few minutes of your time to swear in these two firefighters tonight. First of all, the two, Kate Trefferson and Seth Coley, they have met their six-month probationary period to be sworn in as Anderson firefighters. Kate, do you have any family here you'd like to recognize?
I have my mom, my father, and my grandmother, my sister and brother, and some friends.
Seth, do you have any family here tonight?
My mom and dad, grandparents, my sister, and girlfriend Rachel, and my niece Lila.
Firefighter Seth Coley is a 2014 graduate of Westside High School. He is also a volunteer firefighter with the Center Rock Fire Department, and he is IFSAK II firefighter certified where he graduated from the South Carolina Fire Academy Recruit School. Firefighter Kate Trefferson is a 2015 graduate of Westside High School. He is also a volunteer firefighter with the Williford Fire Department, and he is IFSAK II firefighter certified and a graduate of Greenbelt Tech. If you will, raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye?
Seth Coley.
Kate Trefferson.
Do solemn and swear to do my duty as an Anderson City firefighter?
Do solemn and swear to do my duty as an Anderson City firefighter.
To the best of my ability?
To the best of my ability.
To serve my commanding officers with respect and dignity?
To serve my commanding officers with respect and dignity.
To serve the citizens of the city of Anderson with compassion?
To serve the citizens of the city of Anderson with compassion.
Courage and integrity?
Courage and integrity.
And to uphold the laws and the rules?
And to uphold the laws and the rules.
And the regulations of the United States of America?
And the regulations of the United States of America.
The state of South Carolina?
The state of South Carolina.
And the city of Anderson?
And the city of Anderson.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, you guys can leave if you want, or you can stay. Thank you. Thank you. One other thing before we get into the body of our meeting. We also have a chamber leadership Anderson class here today, led by Jim Stewart, right? Yeah, he's part of the class. But I appreciate you guys being here. Appreciate you having an interest in our meeting tonight. We appreciate you being here. The minutes of our December 12th meeting were distributed. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Not hearing you, I have a motion to approve. That's fair. First by Mr. Buck Roberts, second by Mr. Don Chapman. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, the minutes of December 12th pass unanimously. We don't have any items of old business, and we have three items of new business. And our first item of new business is request consideration of a lease with Anderson University for Anderson Memorial Stadium. Ms. McColl?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is a good opportunity for us to brag on our partner in Anderson University when it comes to Anderson Memorial Stadium. Fortunately, because of our partnership, we've been in a lease agreement with Anderson University for the use of Memorial Stadium, well, most recently since 2007. That was a five-year lease that also included an option to renew it for an additional five years. And the reason it's before you tonight is that that lease expires in June of this year, and Anderson University would like to continue to lease this facility for their program. As y'all know, we have seen a lot of improvements happen at Memorial Stadium, and because of that partnership, we've done a lot of things together financially and manpower-wise at that stadium. The lease, there are no substantive changes to the lease. We did include some additional language that would allow other entities to be involved in the use of Memorial Stadium should that ever arise in the future. It's certainly an asset of ours that we're glad to have, and our understanding from Anderson University is while on their drawing board in the future, they'd like to see a new baseball stadium built on their athletic campus. That is not on their immediate landscape, and that's why this works so well for us as a partnership. So the agreement again would be for, to lease the facility for five years, and again, it would have that option to renew again four or five years. So there's really nothing new here. We're just very glad to be able to have a partner like Anderson University and see this facility put to good use and see it looking really good. So if you haven't seen it recently, good opportunity to take a look at the improvements that have been made out there. Based upon this, the staff recommends approving the lease for Memorial Stadium.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? I'll make a motion with yourself, please. First by Buck Roberts. Second by Mayor Proton. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, that passes unanimously. And I agree with Ms. McColl, the partnerships that we have with Anderson University are strong, and they get stronger each and every year. And I guess I date myself. I remember the first game in that stadium, and that was a long time ago. It's changed a little bit, but it does still look good. Our second item is request consideration of a capital improvement plan purchases. Ms. McColl?
The capital improvement plan purchases are a really important part of our agenda tonight in the sense that if we're able to make these purchases, as we have been over the last couple of years, it certainly has helped our rolling stock in all of our, all of our divisions. I'd like to thank Carrie Stoll, the current Public Works Director, and our other division heads who've worked collectively to put this plan together. Although their, the equipment that is on here tonight is for the police department, sanitation, and cemetery, so it doesn't spread throughout our divisions, but it is, it does represent some important rolling stock to continue to provide the services to our citizens. The total amount of the purchases we're requesting tonight is $301,676. And just as a reminder, you know that we established the capital equipment fund, which is by June anticipated to have approximately $780,000 in that fund. So we're only requesting a portion of this tonight. It is typical for us to bring those capital items to you twice a year, depending upon the bids and what kinds of equipment we may bring it to you slightly more often. And I'll explain that just a little bit. As is the case, we're not adding to our fleet in any of these cases. We're replacing equipment, whatever equipment we take, we take something offline, that equipment that goes offline is placed on auction at govdeals.com. So just to give you a little information about the particular equipment that we're recommending, the first is for the police department. We are requesting and recommending two Ford Explorers. They're called police interceptors, and that is a term that refers to the fact that it is designed to be a police vehicle. So it is designed for the types of activities that daily use for routine patrol or traffic enforcement. These two vehicles are on the state contract with Dick Bailey Ford. The total price for those two is $55,082. I will tell you also that our initial request that was going to, we had planned to bring to you tonight, was going to include some other vehicles. Mostly you will see the Dodge Chargers that you see out there. But on state contract, that, the Dodge Chargers are, the actual bids are under protest, so that's why you only see these two vehicles on here tonight. It's also a little out of the ordinary for us to ask for Ford Explorers or these police interceptors. That would not be normally what you would see us bringing to you. We've done that for a couple of reasons. Number one, we think that it is a good opportunity to look at all-wheel-drive vehicles. It's an opportunity to diversify the fleet just a little bit for the types of work that we do out in the field. Our research would also tell us that our sister law enforcement agencies are using these vehicles. It tends to be today their vehicle of choice. You've probably seen a lot of them around town. They're, the sheriff's office uses this particular vehicle, the highway patrol. We do know Greenwood, Greer, Greenbelt City and County, Clinton. So it's certainly become a more common practice in the law enforcement field to see this type of vehicle in a police, a law enforcement fleet. The second item is the recommendation for sanitation. This is in our trash service, two Ford flatbed dump trucks. As y'all know, we use these in our trash service on a daily, weekly basis. These will replace two vehicles. One is a 1997, one is a 1998. They both have close to, closer, better than 200,000 miles on them. State contract is with Dick Smith Ford for a total of $176,554. The third item is a mini excavator with a trailer, and this is for the cemetery department. This is the equipment that is used to actually excavate for graves in our city cemeteries. It will replace the 1980 Ford backhoe. State contract is with Bobcat out of Greenbelt, and the contract price is $59,632.24. And the last one is a little bit different. This isn't rolling stock, but it is for the cemetery department. It is a Caroline music system that would replace an inoperative system at New Silverbrook. You would notice that at New Silverbrook, there's a tower that had a bell system in it. This obviously technology's changed, those, that system has not worked in some time, and certainly could be an enhancement for the cemetery. It is a sole-source type of product from the Verden Company at $10,408.20. Those items total your $301,676.44. And we have Carrie and Chief here tonight to answer any technical questions that you may have.
Great, thanks. Again, it's good to be able to have funds for the capital improvement plan. Any questions, Mr. Chapman?
I have a question regarding item number three. So this piece of equipment's gonna be for digging graves at all the cemeteries. How many graves do we dig a year relative to our cemeteries? And was just curious if it was, if it's, depending on what that amount is, would have a follow-up question.
Well, I apologize, sir. I don't know that answer right off the top of my head, but I can get back to you with that.
Okay, 'cause my question would be is if it, if that, if that is a limited number of graves that are dug, I don't know if it's, if it's 20, or if it's 50, or if it's 300. I don't, I don't know what that amount is, but I was curious if there was a potential if that number's low, if we can't utilize one of the water department's backhoes, if we've got a trailer that could offset a $60,000 item for something that's maybe not?
The reason we're asking for this particular piece of equipment, the 1984 backhoe, back in that day, they were narrow, and they can get in between the grave spaces. And this particular crawler excavator is narrow enough to go in between the graves, so you don't have to actually move monuments to get to the grave to dig it. It's also got more breakout power like the old Ford did, and they can dig through hard rock, harder than rocks with this piece of equipment.
Okay.
You'll have to excuse me, I've been under the weather.
I understand completely. I've been there myself. I was just curious about the amount of, 'cause when you take a piece of equipment like-
I would say it's in the hundreds, but I will check and let you know. Send me an email tomorrow, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, guys?
Mr. Mayor? I was, just happened to be talking to a highway patrolman today and talking about the Explorers. And he was coming out of an Explorer, going back into a Charger, and he was, you know, he was saying how much of a good asset it was to have. He didn't want to go into the Explorer, but then once in it, he said, hey, you know, this comes in very handy, 'cause it was four-wheel drive also. And so with that, I'd like to make a motion to approve these capital improvements.
First by Mr. Holburn. Second by Dr. Thompson. Any further discussion, comments? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, it passes unanimously. Thank you. Carrie?
Our last item of old business request consideration to purchase computerized maintenance management software for the utilities division. Ms. McColl?
As you all know, we have been diligently working on EPA's requirements, the number of mandates that they have placed upon us to eliminate any sanitary sewer overflows in our wastewater collection and transmission system. We had a list of, you all will remember the C-MOM program, which was a list of about 10 different program areas that we had to meet specific schedules in terms of implementing. One of those programs is designed to really track and keep, keep track of your assets and work orders and know what you actually have in your inventory. So it manages our performance indicators, it manages our workflow, and so forth. So this is the particular software that we're talking about. We went through an RFP process to try and locate a vendor who actually had a program that really met more than just our wastewater needs and had the ability to add modules in the future that could benefit other divisions as well. So this particular one that we're talking about also could have the ability in the future to assist with stormwater, fire, fleet maintenance, recreation, maybe the building department. So it's not a, it is customizable to meet more than just our sewer needs at this point. Nonetheless, the bids or proposals that we received, we received four of them, and they were pretty competitive. In the end, the utilities and IT staff interviewed all of those particular vendors. They studied each of the systems, and in the end, they agreed that fortunately for us, the low bidder was the one that we all felt met our needs the best. This is a three-year contract. The total price, and the low bidder, is Cartograph Operations Management System. The total price is $166,214.75. It does include an ongoing yearly fee of about $35,000 in subsequent years in order to continue to host this program. It is web-based, which is certainly good for- It is web-based, which is certainly good for us, doesn't mean we don't have to have another server that meets this need for us, so it has certainly some functionalities that are good for us in the long run. The other good thing about this is from a funding standpoint, we planned, we knew this was coming, we've been knowing that this was on our list of benchmarks that we needed to meet for EPA compliance and we budgeted for that in our- in our sewer administration budget, so we've got the dollars set aside to make this purchase. We've got IT and Jeff here if you have some specific questions about how this program works or what it's intended to do. We also know that Anderson County uses this program and they have had good experience with it and we think because in the wastewater arena, we do- we have an opportunity to really take advantage of making sure we can communicate with other entities like Anderson County, that certainly is an advantage to this system as well. So we would recommend moving forward with Cartograph Operations Management System in the amount of $166,213.75.
Thank you. Questions, comments? There's an unfunded mandate, right?
Yes, it did.
Now, one thing I did notice, the new administration has- has talked about how the EPA has been somewhat heavy-handed in regulations on municipalities and so I'd hate to, I mean, because our commitment over the last few years, C-MOM stands for what again, I can never remember Jeff.
Capacity Management.
Operations Management.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And how much have we spent over the last two, three years?
I don't even know what to think about. Yeah, a lot. I mean, Jeff kind of...
Seems like every time we turn around, we're doing something that's costing the taxpayers money for the- for what the EPA is requiring.
In 2014, we started increases to the sewer rates of 15% each year and that has went in to fund this and that generates about two million, well, two million dollars a year. So we're spending about two million, two million a year.
And don't get me wrong, I think some of the things that we're doing are necessary for clean water and so forth, but I think some of it is far-reaching too.
It's, you're right, Mayor, it's not just, this isn't just preventive maintenance and it's not just being proactive or preventative. Their word that they use...
Predictive.
Is predictive, so you know, we're- we're, the steps that EPA makes us or the hoops they make us jump through certainly are environmentally good practice. Nobody wants sanitary sewer overflows and so I think we do have to keep that in mind, but also we have to keep in mind that there's a cost associated with meeting those.
Good. All right.
I make a motion to accept it under general approval.
First by Mr. Don Chapman. Second by the mayor pro tempore. Further discussion? All those in favor, side?
Aye.
Opposed?
Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Jeff. Ms. McConnell, administrative briefing?
In your package, you will find your quarterly progress report. This is- this is the report that will give you an update every quarter just to tell you where we are on either your primary retreat issues or major projects that each of our divisions are working on. It will tell you a little bit about what we've done the past quarter and it may also give you something that we're working on for the coming quarter. So please take an opportunity to look at it and give us a call if you have any questions about any of those activities. In our upcoming events, we have the, this Thursday, we have the chambers annual meeting and a great opportunity for us to visit the Blykley Station where that annual meeting will take place. We also have the Concerned Citizens of the East Side that meet at 5:00 PM that Thursday night. And in February, the ABC Community Meeting is on 2/7th at 5:30 at Taylor Memorial and please note the Anderson County Municipal Association Meeting at 7:00 PM in Williamson and if you'll let Brandy know your attendance plans, we appreciate that and that gets us halfway through, that gets us through the first two weeks of February.
Thank you. The months are flying by as we speak.
That's all we have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Not having anything else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So first by Mr. Roberts, Buck Roberts.
Second.
Second by Dr. Thompson. All those in favor, side?
Aye.
Opposed? We stand adjourned.